Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to open the East Long Meadow Planning Boards meeting for June 28th, 2016. I do have to announce that we are recording this, the East Long Meadow Planning Board, for minutes. East Long Meadow Cable Access TV is also recording, and I have to ask if anyone else is recording. If so, please state your name.
Chris, good to have you over, my man.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else?
Jocelyn Sanchez. Just wanted to go.
Great. Thank you. With that, I will open the meeting. We have a joint meeting tonight, and does Long Meadow Planning Board need to open a meeting? I'm not sure.
Well, I don't know if we do, but since four of us are here, yes, I'm Bruce Colton, the Chair of Long Meadow Planning Board. Also present are members Walter Gunn, Donald Holland, and Heather Report, and our secretary, who has indicated she's recording the meeting for her, and it's-
Great. Thank you. We're here to discuss with Mike Crowley an early feasibility of if the two towns would even consider doing a campus-style development which goes over the border in town. Again, it's extremely early in the phase and all. I think Mike just wanted to know if both towns would even be willing to take a look at it. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mike for your presentation and see what we can do.
Thank you, Ralph. I appreciate it, and thank you, everybody, for taking time tonight and coming, listening to our story. My name is Mike Crowley. I'm a Principal with Middle Franklin Development Group, LLC. We are a proposed developer of a portion of the property that you're going to hear about tonight. With me is Rob Lebec from RA Lebec Associates and Attorney Jim Martin from Robinson Donovan. Many of you have heard a little bit about this project on a couple of different occasions. I'd like to just speak briefly to the genesis of this. About close to two years ago now, I was contacted by Bay State Health Systems, who at the time had a requirement for about 50,000 square feet of medical office space. Excuse me. I'd like to introduce Steve Severia from Fusen O'Neil, engineers.
Hi.
So about two years ago, I was contacted by Bay State. They had a requirement for approximately 50,000 square foot medical office space in the Long Meadow market. Knowing that I had development experience in the medical office building sector, they asked me if I was aware of any properties that might be suitable to fit their needs. They had also gone out to the other development, many others in the development community. They analyzed 10 different properties as part of their due diligence and where they'd like to locate this 50,000 square feet of medical space. I had known the people at Berkshire Health Systems for many years in work that I had done for them, going back almost 30 years now. I had a relationship with Bill Jones, who heads the division of Berkshire, which is Fairview Extended Care, which owns the East Long Meadow Nursing Home at the corner of Dwight and Maple Street. Berkshire owns approximately 20 acres of land, give or take a few, or give or take about an acre. 7.15 of those acres are located in Long Meadow and the balances in East Long Meadow. The property in Long Meadow is owned professional. Office space, office use is allowed by Rife. And the property in East Long Meadow is owned Residence B, and a replacement of a skilled nursing facility is allowed via special permit. So in the course of a couple of years of discussions with Bay State and with Berkshire's, because we, as this concept, as my concept started to develop, I thought that we didn't want to just do a single standalone medical building. We thought that the property was far more conducive to do something really special there, to deliver elite medical services to the East Long Meadow, Long Meadow communities, as well as to provide a vanguard of sorts of long-term healthcare for seniors as they age. So this, the cooperative agreement that Bay State and Berkshire have forged took quite some time to come to fruition, but they're there. They're excited about this agreement that they've put together and are very much looking forward to creating this beautiful campus of high-profile, elite-type of, I don't want to use the word elite in terms of status, but in terms of the type of property. We're talking Class A, state-of-the-art medical office facilities and a replacement skilled nursing facility. So it was some time ago, about a year ago, that I approached the Long Meadow zoning board, or, excuse me, planning board, excuse me, and presented this concept, which was basically a standalone. This is the seven acres of land that's situated in Long Meadow. Here's Dwight Road, Maple Street, and here's the convergence of Congress Street. At the time, we conceived a standalone property, 50,000 square foot medical office building with approximately 300 parking spaces. Subsequent to this, we had, and at the time Berkshire Health Systems was contemplating replacing their nursing home sometime in the future, maybe three, perhaps four years up. So my development was going to come out of the ground quite a bit sooner than Berkshire had anticipated replacing their nursing home. Again, as I mentioned, this took almost two years to put this agreement together. Subsequent to that, and with the environment where it is today, Berkshire has decided to accelerate their timeframe in replacing their nursing facility. They're going through the determination of need process right now with the state. So it actually is bringing these two projects potentially on a convergent path. When we found out about that, when we realized that that was going to potentially be the case, I sat down with my site designer, I sat down with the architects for my, the architect for my project, the architect for Berkshire's project, and we decided to, let's look at the site as a 20-acre site and see if we can come up with a better plan than these two just standalone type of concepts. And so what we, what we came up with, what we hope to be is an exciting, state-of-the-art medical complex. Presently, the skilled nursing facility is situated on the back portion of the Maple Street, off of Maple Street. Here's the primary driveway that comes in off of Maple Street in East Long Meadow. Currently, the skilled nursing facility is situated here. And what you don't see here is an extension of that skilled nursing facility, which is a 1970 vintage construction, which, excuse me, 68 vintage construction, which Berkshire would like to replace. Their intention is to replace the existing 131 beds here in a newer, a brand-new facility, which will provide more private rooms and obviously state-of-the-art nursing care. And then they would take this structure, or perhaps even replace it, but right now they're contemplating either renovation or replacement, and build somewhere between 20 and 25 assisted living beds in that, that area. Again, here's my 50,000 square foot two-story medical office building, and then there's a placeholder here for another potential building in the future. Once I started having conversations with Berkshire about doing a campus-style setting, I was approached by another tenant who had a need for approximately 25,000 square feet of office space. So I, we, working with Rob, determined, designed the concept to see if we could fit that property, that building in there, and that's just a placeholder. That's far from a certain certainty. But again, I point this out to you that this is totally conceptual at this point in time. This is not like we're coming into the two planning boards to say, this is what we have, this is what we're asking you to approve. The reason why we're here tonight, frankly, is to see if we can open up a dialogue between the two communities, and particularly the two planning boards, to see if we can come up with a better way to get these projects permitted, so that we're not doing them two silos, one in Long Meadow and one in East Long Meadow. Because what happens in one community is going to affect the other. We totally recognize that. We also recognize that traffic is the main issue here. Stated automatically, unequivocally, traffic is a problem. The intersection is overburdened now, very much so overburdened. I engaged Fusen O'Neil early on to do a traffic study to analyze this 50,000 square foot new building. At that time, as I mentioned, Berkshire was not contemplating doing an immediate replacement of their skilled nursing facility, so I didn't ask them, Fusen O'Neil, to incorporate that into their traffic study, nor did they incorporate this potential 25,000 square foot building into their traffic study. When I met with the Long Meadow Planning Board last year, I mentioned to them that this was very preliminary, that we had a long way to go. A lot of discussions were going to be necessary between our tenant and the landowner at that time. And so subsequently, as I say, we came up with a concept which effectively allows us to look at the town line that separates the property. It doesn't really separate, it just happens to go down a portion of the property, and it almost creates two separate properties. In reality, we, on our site, could fit the 50,000 square feet of medical office space and another building in this location, size to be determined. We would meet the zoning requirements for setback, we would meet the zoning requirements for frontage, we intend to meet the zoning requirements for height, we would meet the zoning requirements for parking, we would meet the zoning requirements for stormwater management. The same holds true with over in East Long Meadow. They have plenty enough land to satisfy what they would like to do as a replacement on a standalone. But we don't think that's necessarily the best practice. We think that combining the parking with the two, the two operations, having the buildings face one another. At one time, Berkshire was contemplating turning their building and facing Maple Street. We told them that we thought that a campus setting with the two buildings facing each other, which would allow pedestrian traffic between the two properties, would be far more beneficial. We believe we'd end up with a considerable amount of more green space. We believe that we'd end up with a better circulation pattern for traffic, and we believe that we'd ultimately allow, be allowed to have less impervious area in terms of paving, because there would be shared, shared opportunities between the two facilities. We know this is something completely different than either community has really been faced with. I'm not familiar, I've been in the real estate business in this market for over 30 years, and I can't tell you that I know of any circumstance where a development has been built over town lines. I'm sure it's happened. The only one that I'm really aware of is up in East Hampton, where a portion of the log cabin is actually built in East Hampton, and most of it's in Hoyou. But other than that, I can't really think of another, another example. So I, again, I prefaced the whole conversation by recognizing that traffic is an issue. The traffic study that Steve had conducted for us about a year ago, I think it was, was it last spring, Steve?
Yeah.
Indicated that the, that the intersection is overburdened already, as we all know, and indicated that the 50,000 square feet of new medical space would bring more traffic to the, to the project, but not to a great extent where it would further denigrate most of the key points, although there were two, two areas of slight denigration, slight, let's just, slight denigration, as I recall. But again, I stress that this is totally conceptual. We realize that it's necessarily going to change. The buildings might move from one point on the property to another. A building may go away. Access points may differ than what you see here, and a lot of that is going to be totally driven by the, the traffic study and the results of that, and then, you know, the mitigation that's going to be required. You know, I had asked long ago, I shared with the Long Meadow Planning Board after I had commissioned the traffic study, I had shared that traffic study with the Long Meadow Planning Board. I've subsequently shared it with the East Long Meadow Planning Board, and I don't know if it's been fully distributed. But I asked at the time if, because we spent a considerable amount of money, and, but I asked if Long Meadow would consider allowing that as basically a basis for the analysis that would need to be conducted, and then if you could engage a peer review, as opposed to reinventing the wheel and going out to, and hiring another traffic engineer to do the study. I think it would behoove all of us to-
Steve, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, but it's directly on point to what you're saying.
Okay.
Which is that I, as you're aware, because you were told this last August, because you were in front of us, the normal procedure with site and design review in Long Meadows is that the board commissions its own traffic studies, which eliminates any conflict, appearance of conflicts of interest, or actual conflicts of interest. And at the time, as you indicated, when you were in front of us, or your project was in front of us, the older, earlier project, I'm saying you, I don't specifically, or don't necessarily mean you personally, but the presentation.
Yeah.
We were told that essentially if you had to pay for another traffic study, it would kill the project, because you didn't have the money.
Uh, no, excuse me.
Well, no, that's what we were told. And, and essentially, and all three members of the board who were present that night agreed with, that's what we were told. That was largely why we agreed somewhat reluctantly to do a peer study, or have our expert do a peer study of your study. But given the fact that the project has now changed so much, I don't really, obviously you're free to present whatever study you, you want to the board, but I think it's the board's, the Long Meadow Board's sense that we would want to have Jason DeGray not do a peer review, but do a new study of the, of the new project. He's done a lot of, well, he produced the study for the Long Meadow Shops expansion. I would assume we'd be using him on other possible developments in the, in the area where you're, you're going to be building, not, not of your property, but where the synagogue used to be, or where the tennis club is, you know, that sort of thing. And just, I, I, I just want to put this out before you commission a new study from your traffic engineers, that I believe it's, I mean, obviously four-fifths of the board is here, but, and this is posted as a meeting, but I, based on previous conversations that are, I, I think our sense is that we would feel more comfortable, you know, commissioning our own study.
Mr., Mr. Chair, can I approach you, Ralph? He wasn't at our meeting. We had that preliminary discussion a week ago, and that was the whole idea. I think you're already sort of heading in that direction, but we were talking about a joint traffic study that East Long Meadow and Long Meadow would be comfortable with, because we're all affected by this.
Right.
And the idea of Bob Parent, who's the Superintendent of Highways for the town of East Long Meadow, had been discussed as a point person for all this, and, I mean, it's so complicated. I mean, this is a regional issue now, it's no longer just Long Meadow. But to your point, that's, your comments, you know, are warranted, and was true what he said, that, you know, we were talking about, that you had a funding situation last year, and then sort of the project sort of just died away, and nothing ever happened in the fall, but put aside, it's a whole new thing now. And I just want to say, I think, you know, when you want to open up for discussion about this, that's, I think Bruce will, you'll be a little more comfortable when you understand it. I think you'll find everybody in the room.
Well, I, again, I was-
While we finish the first day-
Yeah, let's finish your presentation first, yeah.
That's where I was heading.
Well, yeah, okay.
Actually, I think one of the things we want is, because I actually think you're getting too far down the road-
Yes.
On the site.
Absolutely.
I think what we talked about at the last meeting was, the focus of this meeting was, we specifically said we don't want to get too far down into the site and get to the weeds of that. I think Bruce's comments, which I think I echo the same thing. I had, I think, expressed at our previous meeting that maybe a peer review would not be sufficient, given the increase in the scope, so I think everybody kind of agreed to that.
And obviously, we certainly go with you.
Hey, the purpose of the meeting, of the joint meeting, is to get both elected planning boards who are going to be responsible for permitting this, or site planner reviewing and permitting this project, to see if we could get comfortable with a playbook-
Yes.
-that both boards could live with, following their own set of rules, but in an integrated way, for the sake of the development and the site plan. So, because as was mentioned, this really hasn't happened, it hasn't happened in anybody's memory in these two towns. And so the purpose of this meeting is, let's get the two boards together, talk about, what are the, identify the different sets of permitting, you know, it's a special permit that they've identified as needed in East Long Meadow. It's a buy-rite development, the part that's on the Long Meadow side of the line. But then mitigation is going to be shared, stud, traffic studies, you know, environmental impact things, if there's any kind of MIBA requirement, there may not be, but if there was any kind of environmental requirement, those are kind of the shared types of things, and what do we need to see? So we do not want to focus on the site plan and, you know, the traffic studies specifically. We want to say, how are we going to approach all these issues as the two boards?
Yes.
So I just want to kind of bring it back to focus. Sorry, Mike.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you. No, no, that's fine. So, and again, I think this is, you know, one of the issues that the two planning boards are going to have to grapple with. I said the other night that whatever way those two, the two planning boards opt to go in terms of the traffic study, obviously, we understand that that's a necessity, where we totally recognize that. I just thought that Fusen O'Neil, being an expert in the field and having done a good deal of the research already, made a lot of sense for me to just update their report. We talked about transitioning the scope of work, or increasing the scope of work and transitioning the ownership of that, that work to the towns jointly, and we would be responsible for paying for that, but it would essentially take the developer out of the middle, if you will, and that the traffic engineer would obviously be answerable to the two communities. Although I think their work is answerable to the communities regardless of who their client is. But we're amenable to that. We're not trying to thwart our responsibilities whatsoever. Point of clarification, I did not say that at the last meeting that we couldn't afford to do another traffic study. What I did say, what I did say was that we recognize that there's going to be, there's traffic mitigation required at this intersection, and that we could not bear the full brunt of that. That we know that we're partially contributing to it, but we also believe that we can be a big part of the solution by making this a better intersection. And I think our development, joint development, can be impetus to making that intersection much better and flow much better. But a point of clarification, I, I'm certain I didn't say that.
Well, actually-
Well, hold on, hold on.
Let's finish your presentation.
Yeah.
So anyway, so again, we collectively, as a development team, and the two, two proposed developers being Berkshire and, and Middle Franklin, believe that adopting some kind of a concept that would allow for a much more cohesive development of this 20 acres of land would be a far superior outcome for the two communities if they so chose to allow this, the project to be effectively permitted as a single entity, as opposed to in two separate silos in their two separate communities.
So, Mike, just to touch bases, if you were to do these separate, you could literally take that, go to East Long Meadow for skilled nursing, and go to Long Meadow for the other thing.
And again, Ralph, I stress that these buildings may go in different areas. This building may come further, slide further, further west, it may turn and slide further east. It could, it could go in a lot of different directions, this may shrink. A lot of things could happen with the site, it's really moving.
What I'm just grasping is, the reason for the meeting, then, is strictly to know whether or not our planning board, Long Meadow's planning board, would agree to consider possibly a campus style which crosses the property.
Right, that's exactly right.
Right.
And permitting and all would still have to occur in each town under their own rules and all.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So it's simply to look at the, the use of the property and basically say, yeah, we would consider allowing, you know, going over the property line to make for a better facility, as you would state.
It's really going over the town line. And I mean, we're hoping to create a property line here, but it's not a necessity. It works better for ownership if we could do that, but really just building over the town line is, is what would be helpful.
Steven? Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you. General Chairman, it's just in the, in the interest of kind of facilitating, what I think we talked about last time, and kind of seeing what the next steps are, what I think we kind of conceived of is this, the framework, coming over the framework for areas that would be shared review, for lack of a better term, things that, you know, I think, issues that the two boards can see just by looking at the picture, a thing that may be, like I said, the building permit is going to be issued by Long Meadow for the Long Meadow portion, a building permit is going to be issued by East Long Meadow, the East Long Meadow portion. Special permit is going to be granted by East Long Meadow, it'll be a buy, it'll be a buy-rite approval, so it'll be a sign issue along that. I think where the foreseen would benefit from working together is if sufficient, if there's insufficient parking on the East Long Meadow side of the line for the Berkshire side of the development, but the concept of the campus is to share parking with the 50,000 square foot medical office building that is on the Long Meadow side of the line, then even if the standalone application for one community didn't read the parking requirements, the boards could identify, yes, we're in East Long Meadow, they have the shared parking, so we're going to accept the site plan that shows the shared parking range between two buildings, that's one example. Storm water may, onsite stormwater management is another example. The storm water may flow from East Long Meadow into, into Storm Green in Long Meadow. Are we going to accept that as a part of our planning process? Traffic access, as Mike alluded to, is going to be a big one. One of the comments I made at the last meeting was, there's going to be a mitigation package that I think both towns, both towns could benefit, looking at holistically. The mitigation coming from the east may just be a separate turn lane right into the facility, but the mitigation on the Long Meadow side of the line may be a new traffic signal, and what is the cost share, and what is, you know, what does all that mean? So the mitigation payment, if you will, may not be split 50/50, and so everyone kind of understanding why that is. And I understand using that as an example may be the opposite, who the hell knows? So these are the types of things where I would just suggest to the two boards, make a list of concerns you think that you have, that you would like to work together to address, and then maybe make a list of things that you feel are going to be proprietary review for each community, so we know at the next meeting when we get, do get into more of the site planning, and the site planning starts to evolve, the developer has some sense of what the level of, what the format of the review is going to be. Because I think, I mean, I think to some extent, my view as director of planning, but also town manager, is I do want to, you know, just help facilitate the development. I think it's a good project, and, but it's going to be done right. So we don't want to have it be kind of an imaginary, maginal line between the two sites and permit that way.
Mr. Chair, to that point, we'd start with, the big thing of the pyramid would be, what is, are there any state regulations that have any bearing on multi-across-town development? So first of all, you bring up issues like stormwater. Are there any, any state regulations that would hit right upon across-town development?
I've been researching that, and to date, I haven't found anything, but that's not necessarily, you know, the end of it, so I'm continuing it, and Jim and I can work together to try and figure that out.
So Walter, directly to your question, I don't believe there will be. The state regulations for stormwater are state regulations, but in terms of regulations regarding to boundaries and zoning and lot lines, there are nothing that I'm aware of that would prohibit this project.
And that's what I found so far.
And I want to, you know, echo what Steve said, which is that, while he, you know, this is a conceptual project now, and one of the meeting, purposes of the meeting is that while each town will permit the project under their own standards and review, the discussion was that it would be more efficient use of the town's resources, each town's resources and the, and the flow of the project, to share as much information as possible in this meeting with a set of framework, so that we're not doing a traffic, traffic study in a vacuum for Long Meadow, and a traffic study in a vacuum for East Long Meadow, that sort of thing. So I think it's a good idea to try and identify the things that you agree and share jointly, develop jointly, and handle jointly, or in communication, not necessarily jointly, so that you'll be aware of, and those issues will be familiar to you when you permit or review the permit process for the project.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, maybe it might be helpful, and I think that Mr. Crowley may have already touched on these, but kind of go through from a developer's standpoint where you might be looking for relief from individual communities' requirements, but plan to meet those requirements holistically.
Sure.
So for instance, whether it's setbacks, whether it's parking ratios, whether it's stormwater. If you could go through that list, I think it would be helpful for the planning boards to understand. If it's, if it, if it doesn't affect East Long Meadows regulations or Long Meadows, then I think it can be dealt with independently, but if it does, it's a shared issue.
Right. Well, setback to a, to a modest extent, because if we were to just look at the town line, if we were to separate the two properties into two distinct entities, I would be required to keep a 10-foot setback off of this property line. That would require a green space buffer, which would then effectively disengage this property from this property to an extent. Not that you couldn't have the pedestrian connection, but it would be, it would be different. different. It would also shrink the amount of parking, which would require us to effectively elongate the parking, pushing it out towards the corner. Snow removal and snow stacking, we believe works better as a cooperative project. You can see that there's, there's green space left out here, that would provide for that for the, for both projects. In terms of, in terms of all the other issues, though, we meet, we meet the zoning requirements. We, we have sufficient parking, we can handle storm water management. Although, I think that, working, have Rob's engineering prowess, to have storm water management collective between the two properties would make all the sense in the world. It would be cost-effective, and it would be management-effective, and it's going to allow us to keep more green space. So, I think, really, there's not a lot of relief we're asking for, other than really this setback here. We meet, we meet all the other issues, we meet, meet, or all the other requirements. Certainly, we have sufficient frontage, certainly, we have the coverage ratios that were required, certainly, we can meet the parking ratios. So, it's really just a setback requirement on, on that town line.
And even that is based on a property boundary, which there may not be there.
Correct.
Can, where, I was just going to ask you, where is that requirement for the property...
It's under the professional zone in Long Meadow, there's a 10-foot...
In Long Meadow.
Yeah, maybe under the off-street parking...
But there's also, but there's also one in East Long Meadow, too.
There's a 20-foot landscape buffer required in East Long Meadow, but that seems to be subject to review by special permit, whether or not...
For what, what are the 20-foot buffer between properties?
From the property.
Okay. Not districts?
Correct. Right, so right now, what we're talking about is the town line, that may not end up being the property boundary. Arguably, the property boundary could be the perimeter of the entire, of the multiple parcels, and make up the 20 acres.
Just for clarification, you're, you're saying that on the Long Meadow side of the line, under, well, that iteration of the plan, there are sufficient parking spaces for the, the first building and the second building?
No, no, under the campus stuff.
But, but the campus, I don't mean, by second building, I mean the theoretical building in the middle of the parking lot.
Under the zoning requirements for parking, for those two uses, we meet the requirements. There's a different calculation for each one's medical office, the other being professional office.
Right.
We can meet those requirements under this current...
On that, on the Long Meadow plan.
So, it was, the two, the two buildings, or possible buildings in, in Long Meadow, on the Long Meadow side of the, one of the property, you, you meet, you have enough parking spaces?
That is correct. We do desire more.
I, I just, I just, I see what you're saying, but I just wanted to make sure, since it looks like, well, there's quite a bit of parking on the East Long Meadow side as well, that you weren't, like, collectively doing it.
Correct. Right now, we can meet it, we would desire more for the development itself from a functional point of view, because of the medical office, but per your requirements, we aren't able to meet the requirements in either side. We're well over the requirement on the East Long Meadow side, but I was, with this joint plan, but obviously, we're thinking that the two sites work symbiotically. And again, this is strictly conceptual, so, a lot of this is going to change from what the actual is. I mean, this is just visual to help us.
And again, and our traffic study's going to drive a lot of that. You know, the traffic study's going to tell us where points of entry are for this, these properties, you know, that's going to drive a lot of what happens here.
That was actually something that I wanted to speak to, if I could, is that, in terms of interaction between the two towns, obviously, we're, the plan is to have vehicular access to the overall project on both sides of the line, in both towns, and as long as there's a connection between, across the town line, then you're, you're providing access for the project in one town, in, in the other town. So, there's kind of that consideration as well.
I'll come back to you in a second, George.
Hi. Ralph, my name's Don Holland. One of my degrees is in applied mathematics, statistics, and surveys are among the, among the things I studied. One of the problems for a study at this stage is there are many parameters, you don't know if there's going to be a second building. We also need to get a feel for how many, how many exits there are going to be that are going to go into Dwight Road, so that we can get an idea on traffic flow. My business is on Dwight Road, far enough away that I'm not affected. When I go to work from, let's say, Health Tracks, or I come by way of Benton Drive, we all know there are peak times that cars that are coming out of the parking lot for the, for the nursing home, including the ambulances, can sometimes sit there for three, four, five minutes. So, we need to get an idea as to what the amount of traffic flow is, is going to be in one building or two, and how many exits there are going to be in order to have, in order to have a realistic study.
I, I concur, Don, and, and we don't even know if this is feasible. That's part of what the, the traffic study will tell us. Right now, that curb cut that you refer to is down here, we, by choice, moved that further north so that it was just, it was offset in north of the Converse Street intersection. Is it going to stay there? You know?
Let me, let me speak to that. I mean, I'm sorry, because I, one of the things, I do want to say, for, I think we're all, I'm somewhat averse to getting too far in the site plan.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
So, I'm, I'm, call me the catcher in the rye for the site plan discussion.
You got it.
Staff, town staff who do the, who do the plan reviews, or preliminary plan reviews, will be meeting later this week to go through all of that, including what is an appropriate scope for traffic study, what intersections should be looked at. That, that recommendation will be presented back to the developer for the discussion. If I may, if the boards will allow, I can make a couple of suggestions. That may be also something that the board wants to think about, maybe not to decide right now, but to decide as somewhat of a, a set of, I don't want to say the word conditions, because conditions has a specific meaning in the planning world, but as a set of, you know, mutual agreements with the development team, of things that they want, that you both want to see jointly, that you normally wouldn't. One of, and I don't want to add cost to the development, but I think it would be helpful, at least from my perspective, I'd like to see, and I know it's conceptual, and we don't want to spend too much time and feed on this, but what would the site look like planned as if you were going to permit separately, just conceptually, and then what would the site plan look like as a campus? So, you can highlight the gains, perhaps, in green space, or more efficient access, and things like that. I think, that's what, I think I'd like to see. So, if my planning board asks me for a recommendation, I can say, wow, you know, we really got, by doing this as a campus style, you really gained, you know, something out of it. And then the other thing I would suggest is, you know, maybe memorialize, because this is a post-meeting, a joint planning board meeting, both planning boards, I would, I would just encourage the chairs not to adjourn without taking a vote to formalize this joint relationship, if that's what you want to do, so we know at the end of this meeting where we're going.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's the question of the night, right?
Right, that is why we're here.
Then let's just say focus on that.
Right, one thing.
Because it seems like we're already approving, reviewing a project that we're not even...
It's conceptual, there's no project.
I mean, right now, we just want to know if the two boards can work together.
Yeah, exactly, that's the whole thing.
And what they're going to work on.
And what they're going to work on, period.
I, I have two, two questions. First of all, comment, I would hope that the Maple-Dwight intersection is included in any traffic study that's done, because obviously, one of the big issues, in fact, right now, is that that back driveway can easily get blocked, and if you are increasing, no, the one up there on Maple Street, if you're increasing the number of people who are entering there from the west, when the traffic backs up past there, then suddenly you're backing up traffic on the other side, all the way back to the intersection, and there are issues there. The other, the more basic question I have for you is currently in East Long Meadow, that par, there are actually four parcels there, one of which is not actually owned by Fairview. Can you, are you planning on consolidating them into one parcel, East on the, East Long Meadow side, doing ANR?
Yes, we would do an ANR plan and consolidate them all. We are in discussions with that, that single individual that isn't under control.
Okay, very good.
And that, that's another reason, George, why I say, we believe that this conceptual plan works best for replacement of the building. But if we can't reach agreement with that individual, it fits otherwise.
And that's, that's why it's so problematic.
Exactly.
I agree.
I think the question comes in is, can East Long Meadows' planning board work with Long Meadows' planning board on a possible project between us?
I'll take a vote on it.
And I would think, yes, that's easily yes, and, you know, we just need to make sure that we're talking the same language and stuff.
And, you know, again, time is of the essence. Obviously, I know everybody has very, you know, important schedules, especially for the summer, but, you know, we, we would like to, I would like to turn the building over. In fact, my lease with Bay State requires me to turn the building over in October of 2018. I know that sounds like a long way away, but when you're building a big building like we built here, a year and a half ago, it takes a lot of time and coordination effort. So, again, I, I know this is not going to be a process that's going to happen overnight. I realize that it has to take its course. But at least on the decision side of things, if we could make the decisions that are necessary to move it forward in an expedited manner, I would appreciate that. And the developer will make every effort to assist you and provide whatever resources we have at our disposal, including my site engineer, my attorney, and, and obviously, Fosno Deal, if, if they're acceptable to going forward.
So, might I suggest, Mr. Chairman, Bruce and Ralph, that the boards, someone make a motion to...
And that's exactly where I was going to go, if you didn't mention it.
Move to work together jointly on the review of this proposed project, and then if that vote passes by each board, then we can have a discussion about what the topics are that the board would like to see presented jointly or analyzed jointly, and we can get those going, and submittals can flow freely between the boards and from the developer.
I guess I would go, sorry, I guess I would go, I just want to build on Jim's point, because we talked about this a little bit last week. I would, if the motion is approved, I would go through as a joint effort.
All right, we wait and see if the motion's approved, and then we'll come right back.
Fair enough.
So, with that, I'd like to bring it back to the East Long Meadow Planning Board, have a quick discussion, is there anyone that would actually like to start with a motion to approve the working together of the two boards?
I'll, I'll make a motion that the East Long Meadow Planning Board agrees to work with the Long Meadow Planning Board for, to jointly come up with, or to jointly move forward on review of the site plan for this project.
Is there a second?
I second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would hand it over to your board.
I'll make a motion for the, that the Long Meadow Planning Board cooperate with the East Long Meadow Planning Board in evaluating the plans for the proposed development that stands both, both sides of the town border, again, with the understanding that neither board is, neither board is relinquishing their statutory requirements and, as set forth in their respective town bylaws and so forth.
My second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Stephen, did you want to add to that?
So, then I would say, I think this is all kind of, it's new for a lot of people, some people are hearing this for the first time, and it is complicated and somewhat unprecedented, so I guess, you know, the old expression, how you don't know the one by the time, I would encourage the two, I would suggest that the two boards schedule maybe two or three even joint meetings now, because it is summer vacation schedules and things like that, and then at the staff level, we can prepare recommended agenda items that fall into the categories that we've identified as kind of shared review i- issues, and we may come up with some we haven't thought of yet, or when you meet jointly at your next meeting, you may come up with one that we haven't thought of, and that's why you schedule a few meetings out. And the other thing is that kind of sets a timeline that the developer can at least communicate back to his clients, that here are the checkpoints we'll be going with, and then we can try and target maybe the third meeting.
Don't, I mean, don't we already have a meeting scheduled for, I think July 18th or something, 13th?
We, we do, but maybe, maybe do one or two more on top of that.
So, it also seems to me that without more detail from the developer, which, I mean, basically doesn't even really exist, since we're being told this may not have anything to do with anything, it's very hard to ju, I mean, it's like we're being asked to judge smoke.
Well, I think what, scheduling the meetings keeps the developer on point for...
Well, I mean, I think, I think the developer should, should be required to actually submit a, a proposed plan, again, the plan can always be amended, but then we're, then we're dealing with something specific. For example, there's been talk of storm water. Who knows where, where is the storm water catchment, or whatever they call it, going to be?
And Steve, if I could just...
Is it all on one side of the line?
What, what, sorry.
Yeah, if I could just address what, what Stephen was saying is, we have a staff administrative meeting scheduled for this week, where we can address a lot of these issues, and then we can each go back to our boards, it's, you know, Steve can go back to you and I can go back to my board, and let them know exactly what we're dealing with, what the big picture is, so that we can, you know, minimize the doubt, so to speak, and, and set forth some parameters as to exactly what we are going to recommend to you to discuss amongst the two of you.
So, really, there's nothing further we can really discuss tonight?
Not right now, I don't think so, because we haven't...
Do we jump on both feet? Right. That's what I thought.
I think executing the, the traffic study is critical.
I was going to suggest, Robin and Mr. Chairman, that if tonight, you could come to an agreement that either through staff review before the July 13th, that the towns come back with recommendations or, or references on how the traffic study is going to be handled. As a practical matter, you can't present anything until you know what the traffic study reveals and what you need to do in order to...
Well, that's true, but the traffic study requires a plan to evaluate.
I would say, if he wants to expedite it, it should be transparent and independent, so we all want it to...
Yeah, the town of Long Meadow would like to have Jason DeRay, who's done quite a bit of work for the town, do the traffic study.
I think that's jumping ahead a little bit, but now, go ahead.
If we're looking to move this ahead, we're having all these joint meetings, where somewhere along the line, whether it's the end of July, or whether it's the July meeting scheduled, we say, yes, we want to jointly have a survey done, and I'm not talking about when it's done by, jointly have a survey, there are certain parameters we need to know. For example, what's the identity of that type of client, or what, the building on the left, what type of building is it? What kind of traffic flow can be expected from that building? Without that kind of information, a survey can't be done. We also need to know how many exits are proposed. Otherwise, a traffic study is meaningless.
Yeah, Robin, usually, I mean, if you do even a preliminary site design application, I mean, you usually have pretty much your plans in place, and then that's the discussion, you say, well, that's just not going to work, and this is not going to work, this is so preliminary, and this is not even preliminary, this is just conceptual. So, I mean, don't, you have to get a lot more detail and say, really, you should say, put your, you need to put your foot in your mouth, say, I'm doing this, this is what's going to happen.
Well, and that's, that's what I think our, our administrative meeting that we've scheduled for this week, I think that's the ground that we're, we're going to try and establish with the developers.
They have the staff, they have the staff.
Yeah, I understand that.
And we're scheduled for this week.
Yes, good, good. It's just, I also think the developer should actually file a plan for site design.
Bruce, in defense of the developer, until about five minutes ago, they didn't know how they were going to plan the site.
Yeah.
Until five minutes ago, when you took that vote, they weren't sure which way they were going to plan the site, so I'll, I'll give them some credit for even having what they have. I hear what you're saying, and, believe us, the, the part that is normal about this is, staff reviews the plans, works with the developer, talks things out, hashes out driveways, access, we do that staff level on every project, what's different is, like, the board's working joint, they're doing joint meeting, the staff is working jointly in joint meeting, and I'm positive, you know, we're going to see something fast, but don't sweat the lack of a site plan this time.
Right, but in terms of, like, step, normally, it's worked out with the planning board when the developer comes in front of us. We've moved driveways and everything.
Yeah, but this is the problem, because we are under staff, and we have made several professional errors. professional errors over the years where I think we could have done better, depending on the staff.
A project in the scope becomes...
And you got to remember, now, Stephen Crane is, as put forth by our town charter, is the director of community development. So he really does sort of control the preliminary stuff. It's not the planning board anymore, it actually is Stephen Crane, who works with the developer, and hopefully makes our life more comfortable by coming to us with, with prepared information.
And we have too, that's the history of East Long Meadow, that I have an administrative staff review of any site plan, like Stephen said, and you work everything out. Not that we're approving anything, don't get me wrong, but we do everything to make sure that it conforms with all of the requirements, and then we bring it to the planning board. I mean, and then we not necessarily have them approve it in the first meeting, you know, sometimes they continue it because, again, they have other questions. But we try and, you know, minimize the difficulties, let's so to speak.
I think we're really jumping ahead, but I'm going to come back to you in a second.
Just to the point, you know, for the chair of the Long Meadow Planning Board, we've been working on this project for a long time. The programming is well-developed on this property. We have a great deal of information, traffic, surveying. We can put this together in a rapid fashion. We're not concerned about that. What's important to understand is we're at the 5,000-foot level right now. Permitting is pushing in an antique drawer. We're not trying to jam this in in one town or the other. What we want to do is we want to finesse this back and forth and have this work so that when we get to the end of this project, that everybody's happy, nobody's got a drawer jammed into their town. That's really what we're trying to avoid. So that's what Mike's working hard to do. We've worked with the town of Long Meadow early on, projects has changed, some of the scope has changed, but a lot of what we've been doing so far is all coming together at this point. This was kind of the, an opportunity for us to get everybody together, still at the 5,000-foot level, before we venture into either independent projects with independent site plans or a joint project. And that's why we're here. So now we understand that it sounds like it's palatable to the two planning boards to work jointly. We can move rapidly, we can provide certainly the information that everybody needs to get this moving forward.
For instance, a jack...
When you're saying schedule meetings out, are you suggesting in like, two months? So then when we do have a further meeting, they're going to come to us with something at that meeting, is the goal?
I would just say, because of the commitment to work jointly, it just, it really is just a statement about summer schedules. And if your meetings, if your normal, very early scheduled meetings were on the same night, it wouldn't be a problem, but they're not.
Hard to...
No.
No, no, no.
Long Meadow, East Long Meadow meeting, like, the third Tuesday of the month, it's not like that's on the same standing meeting. So you have to schedule since you want to run some special meeting. One town's going to have to have a special meeting, and the other, and the other towns are going to have to make the adjustment. I would ask, I mean, I think two months is probably far out. I think it depends, the timing of the meetings, and getting back to this point, I know that they have done a lot of work on this. They are, Michael's already expressed concerns about the schedule and the need to get this thing moving quickly. So the pressure's on him to have deliverables for the two boards to consider. So if you say, we have one July 13th, he's, he's going to have something to show.
Yeah, I mean, I could have been presenting this original plan tonight, but I don't think that's the best plan for the whole project.
So, but going forward, if we say, okay, we want another meeting in the second or third week of August, you know, can you have, but we want a preliminary site plan for that meeting with at least some update on traffic study, even if it's not complete? If they can deliver it, then you set the meeting. If they can't, then you pick a different week.
I would defer that question to Steve at Fussin' O'Neil and say, if you were engaged to buy the towns to update and amend, amend and update your traffic study, how long would that be, how far up?
More than two or three weeks.
So I don't know how that compares with hiring a new independent.
Well, we're going to talk about that, so we can let, you know, I mean, I guess, I think traffic, there's a lot of other things that could be done to show the board aside from traffic. So I think we want to, we need to keep that, because you said traffic is a big issue. Everybody here who knows that agrees with it. So it really needs its almost its separate track.
Ralph, sir, sir, can we, why just one big, again, another big question, do you, should our boards immediately agree right now, should you come with two plans separate between the towns and one campus style? Or should we just feel comfortable when it's the campus style? I mean, this is...
I think you just need one plan, just campus style, because we've already agreed to work together.
If I'm right, Mike, the first plan that you showed was basically the professional building in Long Meadow that you had originally developed.
That's correct.
So if you went forwards with just that building, that would probably, pretty much mirror the plan that you were looking at.
With nothing happening at all at East Long Meadow?
Well, East Long Meadow would be completely separate.
Do you have a rough of the, a conceptual of the East Long Meadow?
It's, it's morphing as we speak, and a lot of it will be dictated by whether or not we can come to terms with one of the property owners. If not, the shape of the building changes, it still works fine. This is probably...
It's not going to collapse totally, though, so something will happen.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I'm just going to bring it to our board, I mean, do we, do we feel comfortable enough just going ahead with a campus style, instead of making him do a separate onsite of what East Long Meadow would look like if they were both done separately?
I'd feel comfortable with it, without necessarily agreeing that we will approve it until we see what we've got.
Oh, yeah.
But I think the concept, I'm comfortable with, okay. But it's in the details.
So in other words, we don't need to make him do one that would just fit East Long Meadow with the border and all?
No, it was more of a question if there was one available to look at.
I think regardless of whether you look at its individual sites or campicing, you still have the general issues that both towns want to address.
Correct.
And so that's, was one of the genesis for tonight's meeting. And if, if you think it's appropriate, either tonight or by the, you know, with your staff meetings coming up, Rob?
I think the staff meeting...
Do you want to take over the Fussin' O'Neil traffic and have them work for you? Do you want to have the developer continue to work with Fussin' O'Neil? And the towns agree that we're going to have our own, our peer review of Fussin' O'Neil together? I mean, saving, you know, saving work, effort, money. And that's the type of thing that you could, as an example of excellent cooperation through your staffs going forward, and be prepared to say that for the July 13th meeting.
We will be prepared to say that.
I was just going to say, I think it's, yeah, it'll be up to the administrative review this week to make that determination and present it to our board.
Definitely be ready for that for July 13th. I think well before that, for the July 13th meeting.
Are you going to have an independent meeting with our town?
We're all meeting together.
You're going to be together? That's what I thought.
Very, very much.
Thank you, that's, that's...
July 12th, we have a meeting, and I believe we have a public hearing that night.
And your next meeting is July 13th?
13th, that's the next joint scheduled meeting. You guys are scheduled to be jointly on the 13th.
And that works okay? Because we're actually meeting on the 12th, and then again on the 13th as a joint meeting.
Right.
Where are we going to meet?
13th.
Long Meadow High School.
Long Meadow High School?
Yeah.
What time is that at?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Walter, you know, it's something dawned on me when you asked what relief we're looking for. One thing in this that I believe, there's a zoning bylaw in, that requires one loading area per...
Per 50 parking spaces.
So that's a ZVA special permit? We go, all the ZVA handles all parking, so that's probably...
It's just, it's excessive number of loading spaces.
Well, that's the day you're going back, right? Yes, it's probably over, I guess, I think it's going to be ZVA's running classes.
It's a Wednesday.
So, yeah, it's room 815, Rob.
That was my next question, that's a big building. Just walk around it.
Bliss Road.
Bliss Road Side?
Bliss Road Side, yep.
Thank you.
We'll be the ones walking around outside of the building?
Do we have signs?
Just to clarify through the chair, what we'll achieve by, by the 13th? So there's a joint meeting of the town administrators on, is it Thursday?
Yes.
So it's Thursday. Will we understand our direction on traffic at that meeting? And will go away and be able to secure a contract with whoever's going to be doing traffic?
I wouldn't say secure the contract, because it would, the planning would have...
The planning would have, but I think the planning would...
You would have our recommendations for our boards.
So, okay, so the reality of what we'll be able to discuss on the 13th is that we probably won't have traffic information on the 13th, is that correct? It seems...
You might, well, on the 13th, I suppose the boards could, the boards, who have the authority, not the staff, could give you direction on which way to go with the traffic study, I would assume.
Yeah, so we would have that prior to the 13th, so the discussion would be maybe...
I don't think you'd have a traffic study.
Right, in a way.
No, I mean, it's ludicrous with our more...
Yeah, and I can't make, I can't make that decision. I can make the recommendation.
Three weeks.
Does the planning board vote to...
Unless they want to vote on Fussin' O'Neil right now.
Excuse me, can I, can I just say this?
Michael, go ahead.
The, the scope of the project isn't going to change a lot. I mean, we're still looking at a 50,000-square-foot medical office. We know what the bed replacement is here for the skilled nursing facility. We know that they're looking to add between 20 and 23 assisted living beds here. And then this is the question, is whether or not this...
That's a new item to have in the scene.
Exactly, but in terms of the traffic study, those parameters can be given to the engineer, and the engineer analyzes the property subject to that. That's how the traffic study is done.
They have all the data they need.
The data is the data. It's, what they need to know is the uses, which we can, which we've given them already. We will give them the potential, the prospective use for this building, which is just general office.
Mike, I think what the traffic study is going to come down to is the individual planning boards deciding whether we want to go out and hire our own individual engineer to do the traffic study, whether we're going to basically agree to have him continue. I think that's really what it comes down to.
Well, I'm going to definitely endorse that both towns agree, at least on traffic engineer.
On an approach to traffic. This is what we're trying to get to. I hear what you're saying with data, I don't 100% agree that it's a straight line now, because I do think now there is, and we started the discussion, but there is different ways to skin the cat on a traffic study. And I think there's different, I want, I think from the staff level, you want to make sure the right number of intersections are being addressed, signal integration is being addressed, enough, enough looksy at approaches is being done, because I think when you just take the metrics out of the, out of the traffic manuals, it's just, okay, medical office building, 50,000 square feet, this is what we're going to get, it doesn't feel to me that that captures everything, especially since you're going to now have a cut-through site, because they're going to be, there's going to be internal connections, and this is what we kind of talked about last time. I can't answer whether or not what we're, what we think we want to do will address all those things. But it, it may, it may not, as we sit here today, and that's what we need to get together and...
I need, I need our, I need Bob to, to help us on this. He's much more knowledgeable than I am on it, and he has a lot of questions on the, on the traffic study that we've both reviewed. And I agree with Stephen, I mean, we need to deal with this on an administrative level and make sure that, because Bob had raised questions as to which intersections we're going to address.
I agree with you both. I think increasing the scope is absolutely necessary. I'm in total agreement with you on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's...
But that's, I don't want you to leave here today and say this is just, you know, there's no real concept here. This is the concept. I mean, this is, this is how we hope to develop the site. Are the buildings going to be exactly where you see them? Are the access points going to be exactly where you see them? No. But the concept is 50,000-square-foot medical office building, 20 to 23-bed assisted living facility, 139-bed, I believe, replacement skilled nursing facility, and then a traditional office building.
Rob?
Is there a reason beyond tonight to wait to determine whether the planning boards are comfortable with Fussin' O'Neil as the traffic engineer? Because I'm just thinking, if we got that, if that was the vote tonight...
Yes, yes, yes.
Most of us have not seen the study.
Okay.
Yes.
True, the town of East Long Meadow, I don't think anyone on the planning board's seen it. And I never, and our distribution, I'll be quite honest, was limited because it was to give out at our August meeting, we didn't have Quorum, and then September, you guys decided not to come to the September meeting, so I think Bruce and I had the only copies.
Oh, yeah, dropped off.
Right, but that's because of the meetings, because we didn't have... By the way, it never happened, you mind? It never happened.
We're going to bring it back, actually, Bob, you had a question?
Just one comment on a fear, is the traffic study that's on the table right now is a traffic study for a single facility.
Exactly, exactly.
So I wouldn't attempt to judge that absolutely against the campus. It's the starting point for more comprehensive study.
So going forwards, actually, right now, we have a set meeting for July 13th. Is everyone comfortable at that meeting, then taking a look at where we've progressed on the staff meeting and staff level?
That would be an opportunity, because we meet on the 12th.
I would be very comfortable if the staff does come to that meeting and say, maybe they are comfortable with Fussin' O'Neil going forward, and that's the kind of recommendations like Bob would expect, you know, to have, because, I mean, I know we were saying independent, but, you know, I keep, I keep harping that, you know, all these professional engineers are that, they're professional engineers, they're signed and certified, they're not going to deliberately cheat to do something that could literally affect their future careers. But I, we want professional input from the staffs, and then, you know, we will, if that's what we decide, we decide on.
We don't, we don't want that either. We want a site that functions as efficiently as possible.
So we have a date set for July 13th. We want to look forwards for another three weeks after that or something, and set a second one preliminary, that may change, but at least so that we have it in our plans.
We'll have more information after that.
You have the dates there?
So you're saying the next meeting is going to be joint on Thursday?
I think that's the, the only next.
Robin, your staffs are meeting jointly at towns of East Long Meadow, Long Meadow?
Yes, we're meeting this week.
Okay.
Thursday, yes.
And is there anything further that you'd like from us?
Steve?
Should there be representatives out there?
Well, I think we, I guess I anticipate you guys are going to be there with...
Yeah, we need you there.
Yeah, you need to be there.
We need to be there. We need you there.
Site survey, anything, anything you've got wrapped in terms of site plan.
On the 13th?
No, Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday meeting.
The staff meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Whatever you got so far.
Steven, I was saying, we have a very firm survey of the Long Meadow site, because again, our plan was to come in and permit this independently. This was going to happen a long, long time from now.
Can you just turn that into a site plan without the, without drawings on it, maybe just an existing condition site or plan, and, you know, with crosshatched?
Put that on Long Meadow site.
Yeah.
But no, the whole campus. We need to jump off the campus approach with some, some kind of...
Don't we have, do we have full site survey?
No, 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 just something where the review can at least get some, get their teeth into something so that we can report back to our individual boards. Thursday at nine.
Existing conditions, the entire town of East Long Meadow is mapped at one-foot contours for these camps, so I can, that map's available online right now.
Would it be of any interest that maybe one of our members attends their 12th meeting?
Ralph, the 12th?
Yeah, because you might, you might have some information that night.
Sure, because, yeah, because I'm going to report to my board on the 12th as to what the actual staff meeting...
Where do you want it on July 12th?
At the town hall? No, 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 I'm sorry. It's probably the council on aging, because our rec room, I mean, our meeting room is...
Is that the North Main Street?
On North Main Street.
Or by staff...
Right, right, before you get to the...
Six o'clock.
We're going to, we're going to bring this back here. Let's just take a look, we're going to meet as a joint board on the 13th.
Correct.
We have a meeting, the East Long Meadow Planning Board scheduled for the 26th. Would that be sufficient enough time to have a joint meeting again? At least schedule one, and then if there's not enough and we want to put it off, we can figure in work coming basically to your meeting, then the following...
I'm not here the 26th.
I have no conflict in my...
I would say by that time, we can have an existing conditions analysis done of the Long Meadow site. As I said, we already have that of the Long Meadow site, not of the East Long Meadow Long Meadow site. We could have that by the end of July? Is that what you're asking?
No, actually, I'm trying to figure out if the two boards.
Yeah, I think it sounds like Heather and Donna are out.
Are you gonna be around for August?
Yeah, I missed out on the last week of July.
I will not be.
We also have a meeting on August 9th. I mean, would that work for you?
Take them out of town for the first week.
Yes, for me.
It's okay with me.
May it's for me? I don't know.
Well, obviously, I mean, we gotta.
We'll make it happen. We can definitely have an existing conditions analysis done on the East Long Meadow portion at that point.
Well, what I'm trying to do is at least right now, set up a couple meetings, so that we'll meet on the 13th, and then we'll meet again as a joint board on August 9th.
Well, since they are televised, I guess if I miss the ninth meeting, they, you can review the video. That would not have to accuse yourself of the process.
And I can email you, I can get your email addresses and, you know, verify the, where we're gonna have it, because the meeting room at the town hall may be available by then.
I can send you the emails.
Actually, we probably have a, I don't know if this is any better, but I was, I'm assuming that, I couldn't tell you what day it was, but I'm assuming a Long Meadow Planning Board meeting for August is earlier than the 9th.
August 3rd.
August 3rd.
Is that, how is that, or are they around then?
It's a Wednesday night, Wednesday night, August 3rd. You wanna do that instead?
But again, I can review, it's all.
We did probably need.
But you guys have a.
There's also TV.
On the 9th, we actually, it's our meeting, which.
Yeah, they tell about, I think that's better.
I think the 9th, where I, the 9th works the 13th.
Second thing, let's give the 9th.
Yeah, and that gives them a little bit longer time to get something more concrete.
So July 13th and August 9th, we're gonna meet as.
So August 13th, Long Meadow, August 9th.
Exactly.
Right. Location to be determined for the August 9th.
July 13th and August 9th.
And you guys meet at six, not seven?
Six.
Six. We will send our notification to you.
We eat dinner after our meeting. Doesn't say, no, you're farmers, you'd have to get to bed early.
We eat dinner after our meeting.
Bad, you're bad. It's already past my bedtime. What are you talking about?
Okay.
I can just email.
Just as a quick overview, Mike, is there anything else you'd like to add at this time, or are we good for right now?
I just wanna say thank you again. I appreciate this level of cooperation. I look forward to working with both groups. I think this is a really exciting project for the two communities, and I hope that you'll find, I've had a wonderful experience in developing this property for Bay Path University two years ago, and I'm hoping to enjoy the same type of relationship with the two communities that we enjoyed in the East Long Meadow two years ago. And I promise to deliver you a wonderful project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I would actually entertain a motion from the East Long Meadow Planning Board to recess for five minutes. Some moves?
Should I make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I'll make a motion for the Long Meadow Planning Board to adjourn.
Walter's all.
All in favor?
Thank you. Welcome back to the East Long Meadow Planning Board meeting. We've just finished up with a discussion with Long Meadow, and we have a couple more items. Todd?
Town, uh, signed permit application dated June 22nd, 2016. Business name and address is Smoke Inconvenience Planet Vape, 173 Shaker Road, East Long Meadow. Business owner's name and address is Umer Rahman, 212 Stony Hill Road, Wolverhampton. Property owner name and address is Wham HKM LLC. Phone numbers are listed here. Square footage proposed sign is existing. Freestanding sign is no. Catch of the building is yes. I wish these people would really write so you can read what they're writing. Robin, do you have any idea what this is?
I have no idea.
I can't even read the application.
Sign already on something.
Well, reusing, reusing existing signs.
Existing framework.
Already on building, okay.
There you go.
It's attached to the building, projection none. Does sign project over pedestrian or vehicular way? No. Distance atop of sign, a vertical wall, 10 feet, 3 inches. It is illuminated. Sign is permanent. Total number of existing signs is one. Total square footage of existing signs is four by eight, 32 square feet. Total number of proposed and existing signs is one. Total square footage of proposed and existing signs is 32 square feet. Applicant is Elmer Rehem. Estimated cost is $400 hours. Assigned affidavit is attached.
This is old Dick's Convenience Store.
Yeah.
They're leaving the entire framework up and just putting a new front panel on it. It is backlit, and it's Planet Vape, V-A-P-E. So I would entertain a motion to approve the sign as submitted. Some moves?
Second.
Any further discussion on the sign? Here, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass is four, zero. Next, we have a request for signage, Key Bank at Six Summers Road.
Okay. There are six signs, the total square footage for all of them, and what they're doing is they are replacing the signs that are.
Replacing the existing signs?
All of them.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay. Signed permit application dated June 22nd, 2016. Proposed name and address is Key Bank, Six Summers Road. Business owner's name and address is First Niagara Financial Group, 726 Exchange Street, Buffalo, New York. Property owner's name and address is First Niagara Bank Accounting, P.O. Box 428, Buffalo, New York. Phone numbers are listed here. Square footage of proposed sign is 33.45. It is double-faced. Freestanding, yes. Attached to the building, no. Height above the ground is 4 feet, 31 inches. Setback from property line is 27 feet. Distance nearest side yard is 23 feet. It is illuminated. The sign is permanent. Total number of existing signs is seven. Total square footage of all existing signs is 72.62. Total number of proposed and existing signs is seven, existing, and seven proposed. Exists, existing 20.24 square feet monument sign. Total square footage proposed and existing sign, existing monument is 20.24 square feet. Proposed monument is 33.45, 45 square feet. Applicant is Loreno Sign Group. His estimated cost is $5,000. Signed affidavit is attached.
Okay, each sign is separately permitted, so I'm not sure if you wanna go through all of them. But this is the new name. It's a new branding, and the entranceway, as well as the building signs, are just what's there is being.
It's basically the same sign, but with a different name on the same sign.
But each, they've done each individual sign as a separate application, so I don't sure.
And we had already previously approved First Niagara, and they met all the criteria.
Yes, yes.
So it would be my suggestion to basically lump them all together and approve all of them at one time.
I have the same suggestion.
I agree. So do I have a motion to approve the seven signs as submitted? Some moved. Is there a second? Any further discussion? I'm just stating again that these are the same size signs that were there. The branch is simply changing their names, so it's just literally a swap of name on. With that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. We had, you wanna go through minutes, or you wanna do the discussion on Senate Bill 2311? I'd suggest that we defer the discussion on Senate Bill 2311, since nothing recent has happened on it. And it does not look like it's gonna go, gonna move anyplace in the House during this session.
Yay!
So it's gonna have to be resubmitted next year.
So I read it off or not? Fingers crossed, fingers crossed.
And just to elaborate, Senate Bill 2311 has to do with the zoning reform. The zoning reform.
Yes.
It's important that we all be aware of it and what's in it, because it may come back again. And the main issues were the buy right, the imposing of buy right permitting for multifamily housing, cluster development, and accessory apartments in, in some zone in town.
Yeah, the accessory dwellings, accessory dwellings was quite.
That and the multifamily housing is another one. So I just, you know, wanna make sure that everybody on the board at least has some idea of what's in there, and we can discuss it when we've got a little more time.
It was quite interesting reading. Thank you.
That's the part that I understood.
Yeah. Let's go with a review of the minutes, May 31st, 2016. Did everyone have a chance to review them, and are we good with approving them? If so, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And June 14th? Have you had a chance to review yet?
I did not review June 14th personally.
Then I suggest we defer.
We will defer June 14th then till the next meeting.
Defer.
And Robin, was there anything else?
No, there is not. I do have a meeting scheduled for Thursday morning to, you know, administrative review of exactly what we were dealing with tonight. The police department, the fire departments from both towns, the building inspector from Long Meadow, the developer, the engineer, Stephen Crane, Bob Parent, and I think someone from DPW from Long Meadow, I'm not really certain as to who the players are gonna be, but that is the, you know, the beginning of the review. And I wanted to make sure that you knew that there was no way that I was going to make any type of a decision for anybody. It's just a review, like I always do, that I would bring back to you. So, and I wanna, I just wanna thank you for your comprehensive review of this tonight and your willingness to work with Long Meadow. I think it, personally, I think it's gonna be a good project for all of us. We have a long way to go.
Yep.
Yes.
I do notice at our next meeting, July 12th, we do have the site plan review coming up, and all of the plans were dropped off to the building, the planning department. So if we get a chance, stop in, take a look at them. I know I'm going to have some questions on it and some concerns, so I just want everyone to be able to see the plans ahead of time.
Absolutely. Now, to that point, is there going to come a time where they'll have to be electronically submitted? So it could be.
I can scan them.
Okay.
If that was what you prefer, and I can send you a PDF.
That would be wonderful.
I can do that.
That would be wonderful.
We have asked for CAD, but of course, I don't have CAD, and I no longer have the license for the actual quote-unquote GIS, so my interaction with the plotter is a little bit iffy right now.
I understand.
I'm, yeah, I'm working with, with IT to make sure that I get that back. But Bob has been very generous in allowing me to use his engineer to do some, you know.
Is that something where we could actually, on applications and all, put that a PDF file should be included?
Because a lot of the engineers that I work with are happy to do that for me.
Almost everything that I do is electronically now.
I think that would be great to actually include that on there, so that the seven plans plus a PDF file.
Because then they're easily accessible, and like, I have access.
Yeah, because otherwise, I have to scan them in, and, yeah.
So.
All right. So I will.
Like, for a project that we discussed this evening to that caliber, when, when the plans come through with those, they're gonna be 180 pages long. Yeah.
So I just use Dropbox.
Yeah, so we, you pick and pull from your Dropbox, and that should be.
I can have access to, I do have access to that. I'd be happy to do that.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Ralph is going to attend the peer review on Thursday also, so if there's anything particular that you want me to address at this particular juncture, let me know ahead of time, and I'd be happy to do it. But I'm really looking forward to working with Stephen Crane. He's, he's a go-getter, and I'm, I'm really happy to have met him and, and work with, with Long Meadow on this, so.
Should be an interesting project.
I think so, yeah.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.